Hey Joe.
Hi. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Craig, I think I solved that problem of the, of that background noise.
The feedback? Great.
I didn't solve it. A lady who does work for people like me who don't know what they're doing, came in and she solved it. I think we'll find out soon enough.
Seems quiet so far.
Hey Craig.
How's it going bud? How are you?
How are you?
Good to see you Joe, how you doing?
Good.
Excellent. Enjoying the heatwave?
Yeah, it was really a heatwave.
June and November.
For real? We were back wearing golf shirts in the office today.
Hey everyone.
Ashley, Rob, how are you?
Hey Rob.
Good evening all, how we doing?
Good.
Happy Monday.
So I guess you're just missing Amy, right Ali?
Amy and...
Cheer, did you shut up?
Can you guys see me?
No.
No.
The camera is on, um, it's not showing, that's really weird.
Got a cover in front of the lens maybe?
No.
You may have to reset it.
Um, no, I don't have, I don't have anything locking it. Hold on. Um, I'm gonna sign off and then just try signing back in and seeing if that changes anything.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Hey, Brian. Close the store for me, huh?
Hey, good evening, everyone.
John Drew, how are you?
Very good.
Great.
Great.
Not bad.
I had the same issue last week. I wasn't visible. It was on my own sign in and I had to log off and come back and it worked.
Turn it off, turn it back on. It always works. There's Joni.
Hi, everyone.
Hey, Jody.
Hi.
I wait a couple minutes to see if.
Yeah, good.
If both Jessica and Amy show up or Jessica comes back.
Who's Jessica?
Yeah. There's Amy too.
Okay.
Oh my God, it's still doing this. Um.
Weird.
I'm going to switch computers. I will be right back. I'm really, really sorry. I don't.
That's fine. When we go back in person, we won't have this problem.
You have a date on that?
January first, the first meeting of the year.
First meeting of the year.
Do we have hearing dates for 2023 yet?
The only one we have is the very first one, which we proved as part of the last, you know, we approved 2022 and the first one of 2023. I'll put together a potential calendar agenda dates so that everyone can kind of look at it. Typically, I keep to the first and third Mondays. I'll look through any of the Jewish holidays or holidays where I know the schools are off and try to kind of look around that. But I'm trying to stick to that as best as possible. Is everyone excited to be going back home on time?
Thrilled.
No.
No, me either. Me either.
If we took a vote on it, I would vote no.
That's why I guess I didn't want to take a vote.
I don't think we have much choice anymore.
Rob really wants to be in person. That's why.
I do.
Yeah.
I can't wait.
It's just a much shorter commute from my dining room table.
Yeah.
My bedroom than it is from Milburn.
Nothing like getting home at 11:30 at night.
If I'm lucky, yeah.
You're lucky.
Yeah. So, do you wanna, do you wanna wait for?
No, well, we can start, let's start with the minutes and.
We don't have any. There's no minutes. There's no resolution.
Oh, there are no minutes, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So, under her she's swimming.
I'll give her another minute or two. And we're gonna move it. Who's our professionals on the first meeting?
Um.
So we can bring them over.
You don't know what is of the agenda, which I think is.
Well, the first one is Abasi and Marokni.
Okay.
There she is. She's back.
Okay, so this. Promising.
Yes, yeah.
There you go.
To explain it to my husband when he gets home from work why he doesn't have his computer, but at least I'm on, so.
Awesome.
Let me open the meeting.
Yeah.
In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the voting board in town hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers, a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Monday, November 7, 2022 via Zoom webinar.
Thanks very much.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Soder?
Yes.
John Drew Harjani?
Here.
Ashley Abicar?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Jessica Glenn?
Here.
Chairman Craig Putner?
Here.
All right.
All right, so this evening we do not have any minutes or moralization, so we're gonna jump right into the applications. First one we have is calendar 389422, property location of 18 South Beach Off Road. The applicant is Z Obiase and B Mirakni. Um. Over. You turn your camera on, please, Mr. Bossy and Mrs. And unmute yourself, please.
Say nothing about Bossy.
Perfect, gotcha.
I'm just going to their architects to come over.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he keeps jumping in and in China. For some reason, I've tried four times. It's just, he's not coming over. Why?
Your hands is hand raised now.
Yeah, I, and he's just not moving over. When I bring you over, is there something that you have to accept?
Yes.
There is.
You have to accept it as a panelist.
Okay, that's why.
Yeah, I don't have any privileges. Sometimes I do.
I'm gonna make you the co-host, Craig. So you're the co-host, Craig. I don't know why the architect is. There we go.
There we go. Good evening, how are you?
Hi, how are you doing?
Good, good. Um, so, uh, would you like to start or would you like to start?
Let me swear.
Let's swear people in first.
All right, swear you guys in.
If you both would just raise your right hands, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to given tonight's proceedings to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your names for the record, please, spelling your names.
Z, Z E I N A B, first name, Abasi, A B B A S S I, last name.
Sir, you're next.
Mr. Rastami here.
Yes, my first name is Vahid, L A H I D, last name Rostami, R O S T A M I.
Okay, so who would like to proceed?
If you want, I could share my screen and go over the.
Okay, Mr. Rastami, before you start, if you're gonna provide the testimony, why don't we get some qualifications from you to qualify you as an expert witness? Can you tell us a little bit about your background, your experience, profession, licenses in the field?
Yes, so I actually have been graduated from bachelor's degree, master's degree, and a PhD in civil engineering. And I have been practicing in New York and New Jersey since 2014. And well, probably it's the first time in township of Melbourne that I'm actually doing this work.
So you, are you, you're a professional engineer and not a professional architect, right?
Yes.
Is your license current in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
And what are you going to be, so you're gonna be, I think, as an engineer tonight?
Uh, yes, I actually, well, I also provided the whole plan, site plan, architectural and the structure. But yeah, so I will be the engineer for the, this project. There's an architect that specific, a separate architect for this project, so I did the whole thing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rastami, there is a separate architect for this project?
No, no, there's no design professional for this project.
Okay. Um, then please proceed.
Sure. So let me just. My screen. Yeah, I think you should be able to see the cover sheet.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And Mr. Rastami, um, please keep in mind that any page or sheet that you refer to that has not been submitted to the board must be marked separately, okay?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so this set that we are seeing on the screen now are submitted, so this is basically the first sheet that shows the location plan. So I just wanna zoom in on the, the plot plan to explain what this project is about. So the applicant is seeking a building permit to construct a second floor of the existing garage. So the area that is hash here, this is the scope of the work. So the garage is existing and just the floor elevation. Now the roof gonna be removed and the second floor functioning as an home office gonna be built on top of this existing garage without changing or altering the footprint of the building. Um, however, since the existing garage was too close to property line, it has existing non-conformance. But however, because of the second floor, there's a variance required for the second floor side distance, also the combined side distance. So these are the two variances that the applicant is seeking, hopefully to grant, be granted. So if you have any other questions or need me to explain anything else, I'll be happy to.
I'm just, can you just quickly explain the size of the lot in relation to what's permitted in the zone?
Absolutely, so.
Your zoning table.
Yeah, so the, the block table here is provided. So the lot area is 7,364 square feet. This existing, while they're required is 20,000. Again, this is the existing non-compliance, so we're not sticking the variance for that. And the existing lot coverage is 30%, required 35%, which is again, not, no change. And however, the maximum building coverage exceeds, well, is increased from to 13.9 with, or the required is 14, so still within the allowed threshold.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, can you take us through your elevations?
Okay, let me move to the elevations. Yeah, so this is the existing elevation of the house, so actually the front elevation. So the garage that you're talking about is actually this portion that is, shows as a dash line, so the two car entrances. So the attic to this garage is gonna be removed and, well, I'm, I'm gonna go to the proposed section of the same view. So you're gonna have the second floor and a new attic on top. So the new, basically, roof gonna mask existing ridge. So the height of the, of the house will not be increased, just matching the existing height. And actually show you the three-dimensional view. Okay, so this is the second floor that is going to be built on top of the existing garage with a new attic on top. So the ridge again is gonna match the highest ridge of the other portion of the house.
How are, how is one gaining entry to the second floor office area?
Yes, so the entry would be, let me show you the second floor plan. Yes, so the entrance would be from the existing bedroom on the second floor. So this is the door to the, the new room. So that's the entrance, so. Got one.
And shows new, new room. Is it gonna be one room? Is it gonna be two rooms?
Yeah, the partitions have not been shown, so it's gonna be like a removable partition because it'll be like the office environment. So there's no, like, permanent partitioning, so that's why we're not showing this. It's more of an interior design that's gonna be chosen by the applicant later on.
Is there any plumbing being installed?
Uh, there's no plumbing. Nope, there's no bathroom or anything installed. It's just air conditioning that gonna be like a separate heat pump system gonna be installed just for this room.
Can you gain entry from the garage or otherwise outside?
Uh, no entry directly to the room from the garage, no.
The only entry is through the other room, through the other bedroom?
Uh, no, that's the, the only entry that's actually coming from the, the bedroom on the second floor to this room.
Yeah, so there's only one way to enter the rooms.
Correct, yep, yep.
What are the dimensions for this room and how high is the ceiling? You said it's gonna match to the top of the other part of the home. How tall would that be?
Yes, so, well, there's gonna be new walls installs. Basically, let me show you one of the elevations. Sorry. Yeah, eight feet is the second floor room, actually the clear height. On top of that room, there's never been an attic which is just used for the storages. No, it's not like a living space, but that's, uh, yeah, it's nothing to do with the, the clear height of the, this room. So it's gonna be like the separate walls constructed on top of the existing exterior walls.
What did you mean about partitions, movable partitions in the room? Can you just elaborate on that?
Like the office area environment, well, this is per applicant's requirement. So we're not really, have not designed, have not designed the interior design of the office area. So they will be like free to choose, like the.
I mean, are there gonna be like a lot of people in there with like cubicles, like an office or like what?
Basically, just for two people, because, yeah.
What were the dimensions of the area, this new?
Yes, so the dimensions are, well, this portion is 25 by 21 feet, five inches. That's the usable area plus the three foot four times 13, seven. That's uh the usable area plus the three foot four times thirteen, seven. So talking about. Uh, like. A bit more and then uh five hundred, probably five hundred fifty square feet.
So I'm I'm not really clear, if you could go to the um. Right side elevation again, please.
Right side.
Yes, three D right side.
So you want the three dimensional views or the elevation views?
The 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 three D, I'm sorry, it was like from the right side, yeah, yeah, this is the one, okay, yeah, okay. So I'm not really, so first of all, so let's let's talk about this room. With the three windows that you'll be going through to get, is that, what what room is that?
The the new room?
No, no, what what what's this?
Yeah, that's the bedroom, that's the uh.
Which is at the master bedroom?
That's the master bedroom, yes.
That's the master bedroom, and so this door.
This door right behind this wall, if you see my cursor on the the screen.
Right.
That is right there.
Right, and and. You know, because like obviously the roof, the roof, the existing roof is sloping down, so I'm curious as to what this door. Is it a standard door? Do you have to make some kind of adjustment to the door for it to fit into the space?
Yeah, that's the standard door, if if you wanna install a standard, that's the only place that we can, like you mentioned, since the uh. Uh, we're losing headroom beyond this point, so we'd have to install the door right after this exterior walls, yes.
Right, and and how wide is the door?
Thirty two inches, okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Uh, board members have any other questions?
Uh, yeah, just one more, Greg, uh, just you mentioned that the stop of the the roof matches with the left side of the home. How high is that?
Oh, the uh the top of the ridge. Uh, let me, yeah, so the ridge is at. Just see if I have a total height here. Yes, I could actually add up everything, I don't know, I have the number. But it's approximately twenty nine from the first floor and twenty. That's thirty one from.
And I presume that's in conformance with what is required per your zone.
Yes, because we're not exceeding, uh, yeah, the the bulk requirement.
Got you, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, so let me, let me ask you to go to the right side elevation um. Zero four C, I think, is the uh drawing number.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm just, I'm honestly, I'm kind of trying to understand where that door. You know, how that door looks.
So if you wanna see this door, actually, this is gonna be here, let me uh, so door gonna be. Right here.
Okay, wait, 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 so if we're gonna, if you're gonna. If you're gonna mark the exhibit and change it. We should mark it as an a separate exhibit.
No, I'm not changing, I'm just showing uh for you to uh where the door is, actually, it's not part of the drawing though.
Okay, are you gonna, okay, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And ju- just to follow up, so this is a standard door, basically eighty feet high, uh eighty inches high and. Um, thirty six normally, that if I know, if if I if I understand that's the normal standard size.
I believe it's a thirty two inch, eighteen, eh eighty inch high, yes.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Can we get some testimony about variances being sure?
Sure, let's do that. So let's hear your proofs uh on your variances as to why you need these and the criteria. Because you really haven't spoken to anything regarding a C one or C two hardship.
Yeah, so the base, the basic reason that the applicant is seeking this um like new addition. Uh, since both wife and husband working from home, when there's no dedicated area for the office. And the other room, having another two kids in the house. So they wanna have a dedicated office so they can actually uh work from home and remotely um full time. So that was a.
We we get, we get that, that's the use, what's the hardship? Why, why are you, you're looking for a second story side yard setback and a combined side yard setback, correct?
Yes.
Okay, why?
Cause uh building, let's say elsewhere in the uh, let me show you the uh the bulk table. I believe the uh the, okay.
So why don't you, let's focus on this, why don't we talk about the lot area? Why don't we talk about the shape of the lot? And why don't we talk about existing conditions with regard to the side yard setback?
Yeah, so the existing lot area is already lower than the required in the uh the zone, so seventeen thousand. So uh, no other addition like in the in the area that uh could actually. Uh, meet the site, uh side setback requirements could have been done without seeking another variance. So uh, it's been decided to just keep the footprint, not exceeding the lot area or the the lot coverage. And having a second floor. As an home office area.
Tell us about the shape of the property, is that, is it unusual?
It is unusually regular.
In what terms? Describe it.
Uh, it's more of a uh, it's like a triangular shape with some. Uh, I would say bump outs that. Uh, limits the the development envelope, basically.
The fact that it's a pie shape and the fact that it is wide in the front along South Beach Craft. And then it gets narrower because of the nature of the dimension of the lot, correct?
That's correct.
Is it an oversized or undersized lot?
This is an undersized lot.
Anything else, Rob?
No.
All right, well, in that case, you can stop your screen share. Any, I know we've been asking questions during the testimony, but are there any other questions from the board for um? The engineer? Any questions from the audience regarding the testimony or questions on? Any comments from the audience regarding this application?
I I have another question.
Go ahead, Steve.
So sir, let me ask you this, um. You know, embedded rooms, you know, where you have to go through one room to get to another room, it's um. It's an unusual design, uh, it it tends not to be. Uh, particularly efficient and it it. My my question is, um, why this particular design? Why was there not some other design or what other designs did you look at or consider uh other than this one?
Well, the other options would have been just changing the garage itself. To a uh like a home office, which was not practical, because the applicant would have lost uh the other parking spaces. And any other, um, like, like I explained before, any. Uh, it could have not been like a kind of a new attached uh room to the existing room because of the restrictions of the. The lot area and the lot shape. And so this room basically functions as an extension to a uh the master bedroom, basically. So we can call it like a, I understand this is the one uh just point of ignorance. Uh, to the uh the other rooms, but that was uh the most practical options. Option that they could have uh think of.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions quick? In that case, I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Uh, board members, what are your thoughts?
Well, it certainly, um, you know, has the characteristics of an odd shaped lot, an undersized lot. Uh, so there are certain hardships that are inherent with the property. Which is pretty obvious. Um, but the design itself is is um, you know, unusual, I think, from my perspective.
Okay.
I was, I was concerned about the lack of testimony as to. Whether this uh. Uh, proposed addition is going to uh be seen. By the neighbors on that side of the property. How close, I mean, there's a very significant variance being requested in terms of the side yard setback. How does that affect the next door neighbor? We've heard no testimony about that.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion to reopen the meeting, please?
I'm moved.
A second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Red Sami, did you hear, did you understand uh Mr. Steinberg's question?
Yes, um, well, it's true that uh the uh the requested variance is a side setback. However, this is an existing uh nonconformance situation. So the existing garage is eight eight feet from the property line, so we're not really changing uh. Yeah, or going beyond this uh preexisting condition. So the uh the virus is requested also eight for a second floor, while the first floor still remains the same.
M- Mr. Rastami, let me try to focus you a little bit. Um, the property that is closest to this property. I think it's lot ten, how far is the house away from this proposed, on that property? How far is the house from this proposed addition?
Uh, from the survey that I have, uh, well, it doesn't really show.
Have you, have you been, have you been to the property, Mr. Rastami?
I've visited the property once, yes.
Okay, do you do you recall how far approximately the closest home is to the proposed addition?
I really don't, but I can quickly check from the aerial views, but uh. Let me.
And why don't you also in answering Mr. Steinberg's question, maybe address existing trees landscaping in the area. As that might impact the vi- any visual effects, negative visual effects from this proposal.
Okay, so um. By looking at. The uh the aerial view. I can measure approximately fifteen feet, the uh the decent property building to the end of this. Uh, property line. And uh, the the uh, the existing landscaping, I believe their trees are planted along the property line. Like the subject property line.
And also like make you come, because um, um, I live here basically, so uh there are like trees on both sides. Uh, both on our property and the neighbor's property that um, in obstructive view. And also their elevation on the neighbor's um house is seems to be higher than um our house. So I don't know if these um will help.
The new, the house next door is new construction, correct?
That's good, it's a new construction, yeah.
Anything else, Joe?
Nothing else.
Is is this the applicant's primary residence?
Yes.
But just had a clarificatory question, Craig, if I could.
Absolutely.
Uh, uh, so you mentioned about fifteen feet from the property line or from the where the proposed addition would be made?
No, the fifteen is from the adjacent property to the proper line. So if you're adding another eight, but I'm measuring like approximations, uh, because it's gonna be like approximately twenty three feet from property to property. Uh, uh, building to building, sorry.
God, thank you.
Excuse me, Craig, there is someone in the attendees.
Yeah, I just saw that with the handout.
Hand raised, I don't know, perhaps he is. A neighbor question or?
So uh, let's bring Mr. Tyson over.
Hello, sorry, guys, I'm I'm actually the contractor in question, so that's why I was trying to uh kind of just.
Wait, 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 Mr. Tyson, hold on.
Yes.
Uh, do you, are you asking a question or are you here to make a statement?
I I was trying to elaborate on the, on the the difference between the two adjacent properties.
Okay.
All right, well, let's, let's swear you in.
Just raise your right hand, please, do you swear or from the testimony about to give in tonight's proceeding be the truth, the whole truth comes by the truth?
Yes, sir.
Your name for the record, please.
Brendan Brendan Tyson.
And uh, let's, let's, once you identify yourself, who you are, what you do and all that kind of stuff.
Uh, Brendan Tyson, I'm uh Madison General Contracting, um, general contractor, uh, you know. Most of my work is done in Essex and uh and Morris Counties, um. So, yeah, I mean, I I just was trying to kind of elaborate, I've been to the site many times. Uh, the the height difference between where their property is versus that adjacent property is a good. At least ten or twelve feet, um, there's plenty of natural vegetation that's kind of blocking the view of the house anyway. Um, and so, you know, the the addition here is is really, you know, it's just, it's more about. Um, it's it's not really altering their their viewpoint, it's not gonna block any views out of their home. Um, that aren't currently being blocked by other trees or other things, so that's that's really all I was just trying to kind of uh. Elaborate on that, there is quite a substantial elevation difference between the two homes. I mean, I don't, yeah, that's that's it, sorry.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Tyson? Okay. In my case, I will close the public portion of this meeting, um, so anyone have any comments based on what you've heard? And your thoughts?
Um, I'll I'll go, I, you know, I do see a hardship with the with the lot shape. Um, I mean, the the applicant, especially if the applicant wants to build on that side. I mean, they're they're really constrained because it's already a preexisting nonconforming, so going up. Um, you're gonna have to um get a variance for combined side yard and second story. Um, sidebar, side yard setback, um, I agree with what. Um sidebar side yard setback. Um, I agree with what Steve is saying. I do think internally the plan is a little bit awkward, but. Um, I don't really think that that's, you know, what we're supposed to be looking at. It's really about um, you know, how it's gonna look from the outside. How it's gonna impact the neighbors. Um, I think that the house is offset enough from the neighbor's property that I don't think that it's going to. Um, be an issue for the neighbors. Um, I could support the application.
Thank you, Jessica. I I would agree. I think this is this is definitely fall under C one variance. I think there's definitely a a hardship as it relates to the pie shape of this property, the. Large amount of frontage and then how it tapers down the back. Because of that elevation change next door and this house and and just the overall scale, the home next door, we don't see that. This addition is going to make a material difference to the, you know, light air and so forth of. The home uh next door, the new home next door. Uh, since the street does curve away, it does kind of take the sightline away from this. The particular area, so and since it is set back further than the actual structure of the home. It's not going to be overwhelming um in its scale. Um, I too question the access, but. If that's what they want to do, then have at it. Any other comments? Then in that case, could I have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Toger?
Yes.
Sean Drew Horejani?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Craig Clitner?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Okay, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
Our next application we move into is calendar thirty-eight ninety-one twenty-two. It's seventy-six Linden Street. Uh Rajesh. Yarasi.
Hi, can you uh can you hear me? I just rejoined as a panelist.
Perfect, gotcha.
Great.
Um, is there anyone else we need to bring over for your application?
No, just explain.
Just you? Okay.
Okay.
Then uh we'll have you sworn in.
Can you just raise your right hand, please? Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name, spelling your name for the record, please.
It's uh the full name is Rajesh Yarasi. I go by Raj. Uh it's spelled R A J E S H. Uh, the surname is Y E R A S I.
Thank you.
Okay, Mister Yarasi, why don't you explain to us what you'd like to do this evening and these and the variances sought and um the proofs associated with that?
Okay, great. So there there are two projects. Four variances, but two projects. Uh I I live in the upper Wyoming area. Uh, I've already gotten approval for both from the Historical Preservation Commission. Uh, the first one is, and just to back up and give context, it's uh I bought the house last summer in a state sale for. Myself, my my two young boys who are eight and six, uh who might have half the time. Uh, and my dog, my cat, who might have full time. And uh it's a tiny house. It's a small house. It's twelve hundred and fifty square feet, so I bought, you know, the small house in a nice neighborhood. And uh I just want to increase the usable space uh for my growing boys. Um. You know, for obvious reasons, since it's only twelve hundred and fifty square feet. So the first project is, I I've been doing a lot of kitchen renovation and things like that. It was, you know, kind of a fixer-upper. The first project is adding attic dormers on the front and the back to increase the amount of usable square feet. Uh, you know, the attic's ridge line is uh a little over seven feet high. And because of the slope, you you know, it it gives very little space as it currently is to use the attic. Uh, as a living space, as a a play area for the kids or whatnot. With the dormers, it'll open it up. It's still kind of low, but it's high enough for an adult like myself to walk around and certainly for the kids. So the first project is adding uh just two dormers. Uh, it's a small house in on a relatively small plot of land. It's only six thousand square feet. The entire house is about. Twenty-three feet from the the property line, the 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 street, the front property line, and there's a setback of forty feet. Uh, the the way the rules are are written. Um. Uh, but I'm not building on the ground. None of this, none of what I'm doing is going to uh extend beyond the perimeter of the house. Uh, the front's actually two feet in uh from the front of the house, the front dormer, which is the one which I think is in question, most in question. And uh it's certainly not going above the roof line, so it's literally just two attic dormers. Um, may I share my screen?
Sure, please.
Okay, great. Um, so these are the dormer designs. Let me just first uh. Show something. Uh, so this is what it's going to look like. This is my architect's rendering.
This. These are all a package, correct?
I'm sorry, come again.
Uh, these these are all in the package that you supplied us, correct?
Yes, yes, they are.
If there's going to be any new stuff, we do have to mark it, so just let us know if there's anything that you're adding.
Understood.
To work.
Okay, yep, so this is in the packet. This is the house across the street, seventy-nine Linden, just to give. You know, the the board a a sense of that this is consistent with architectural style of the neighborhood. His house is also situated, I don't I didn't measure it, but it looks to me like a similar distance from the curb. It's Linden Street. Um, sorry?
No, continue.
Uh. And uh this is what it would look like, so I'm I'm asking for a variance uh. You know, to create this additional living space for my children who are growing quickly and, you know. Uh, pretty active. So that's that's my quote-unquote hardship, you know, just trying to increase the usable area. I could go into the second project, or if if you if the anyone on the board wanted to had any questions about this project. Uh, you know, I have all the drawings in the packet. I'm happy to talk about what it's going to look like. Here's the survey. Uh, as you could see. Um.
So let's talk about the variance that this this. Uh, requires uh relief requires uh for this. Particular project that you're looking at here. So. What are you seeking? Um. In regards to the dormer?
Well, there's a um a setback rule of forty feet uh from the front of the house and uh. This is going to be twenty-three feet. Um, from the property line. Because it's the whole house is. Twenty-one feet from the curb. You could see it right here. There's it's twenty. Twenty point eight feet from the front of the from the street, basically. So.
Are you making the condition, are you making the condition worse by doing this or no?
Uh, the condition meaning um.
Your house setback. Are you coming closer to the street than the front facade of the house?
No, not at all. It this is an accurate uh drawing that my architect put on the survey. As you could see, it's it's actually twenty-three feet away from the curb. The house is twenty-one feet, the front of the house. So it's all none of neither of these dormers are going to extend beyond the perimeter of the house as it's currently built, which is kind of a block with a sunroom. And uh some of the drawings also show that uh, you know, from the side perspective, here's the front of the house. I don't know if you could see my cursor, but the upper left-hand image, you could see it doesn't even. Uh, hit the front of the house. It's actually back a little bit. In keeping with architectural style of the neighborhood. I got guidance from Barton Ross on that and and my architect, of course. And on the back, it's a longer shed dormer, uh but it it it's still set back from the the perimeter of the house and given that there's a kitchen bump out and even on that second floor, it doesn't exceed it. It it sort of meets it.
Yeah. So continue then with your other variances.
Okay, the other project is uh relates to a patio and I explained in my note, it uh you know. Apologize for this, but you you know, I I work in finance. I don't do this for a living and I relied on my contractor to get a permit and. He claims he called the township. I think there was some miscommunication, we'll call it. I don't know what happened, but we actually built. He built the patio and driveway. And let me show you what that is. So I'm I'm sort of trying to get the permits and everything after the fact. I applied HPC after the fact and. Um, they were fine with it. Um. This is a a rendering of what we did. Let me just first uh. Show you a a the the survey. So this is the property when I bought it. There was a patio here, concrete rock. Covered with stone, uh literally like over two tons of material. And then the driveway extended right into the garage. A few members of the board came and um I believe. You know, could verify that there's a slope to this land. So with the slightest bit of rain, the water would wick all the way down into the garage. Um, and this uh patio is in disrepair. There's a tripping hazard. It was just in bad condition. Um, and there was no fence around the property. I've since built a fence approved by HPC uh for my dog and. My family. And what we did is we demoed uh all of this. Uh patio. We also demoed the asphalt to reduce the runoff into the garage. And we replaced it with a partial stretch of of what I thought was driveway. Um. You know, there's a double. I had a double gate put into the fence to facilitate entry to that. My intent has been to, you know, park. My motorbike there and then during the winter wheel it into the garage. The garage is. Rather narrow. I I couldn't even fit my car in there as it stands, but you could certainly fit a smaller vehicle like a motorcycle. Um, and so we redid this whole thing. Uh, my property. For such a small property of six thousand square feet, it's wider than it is longer. It's it's only a hundred feet deep. But it's sixty feet wide, so we constructed the patio to provide adequate space, but in a way that preserves depth of the backyard visually. Um, I'll show you what it looks like. So this is the design we did. Um, this was what we call driveway. It's um. Uh, you know, Eileen, who's been very helpful navigating me through the process. Uh, and I totally understand where she's coming from. She believes this is patio. Because it matches, the pavers match. There is a line in the pavers, but it's the same pavers and the same elevation. We weren't aware of any definitions with in regard to that. Uh, and again, I put a double gate here, so the intent was that this was going to be driveway. If it's interpreted as driveway, there's no offset, no setback uh violation. Um, and then this is the rest of the patio. Uh. You know, here's an area where I could barbecue safely away from the house. And here's a living area and these are steps to the new kitchen uh dining room reno that I'm doing where it's kind of an open arrangement. Um, I have some pictures here. Uh. Again, this is just a different view of it with some measurements. So if this is interpreted as as patio, this stretch of driveway. Uh, again, I have a double gate here. It's uh there's. The setback was reduced for small lots like mine to nine feet the last summer, I believe. It is four feet over and because it has a diagonal slope, it's just four feet over here. Right? So it it goes from like zero to four feet over that that setback. Uh, on this side is the neighbor's. Uh driveway, so it's quite far from any house. The 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 couple, the uh. Foster's uh Foster and his wife who live on Wyoming. They have a a true historic property. This is their driveway, so they park on Linden. And then walk over and then there's another driveway on the other side of that, actually. So there are three driveways. Next to one another right here, so I just want to point that out that this is nowhere near anyone. None of it's visible because I have this six-foot-high fence that my dog can't jump over. And there's a double-wide gate so that. Someone with a smaller vehicle could drive into the garage. I could park my motorbike and wheel it into the garage. Since doing this, the water runoff is really, it's really worked out well. This is all now grass. It soaks in most of the water. Um. And, you know, here are views from the front of the house. These are a little bit older. There's a lot more landscaping. Um, so as you can see, none of it's visible from the front of the house. Uh, this is what it looks like with the gate open. Uh, that's my dog. So the driveway, as you can see, is quite narrow. Um, we're filling this in with pebble and this is all grass here now. Uh, so I did put in that double-wide gate, just, you know, to speak to my intent. Um. So there are three variances here. One is this side yard setback. It's nine feet. I'm four feet over. This is five feet from, as you can see, about five feet from the property line. Um, and then there are two others, which are uh coverage. Uh ratios, accessory use coverage and lot coverage. And. Um, the requirement for the excess max accessory use coverage is twenty percent. All of this is now. Twenty-three percent, so it's a little bit above that. But I would ask that the board take into account that prior to what we did, because you had asphalt going all the way here and there was a patio that was deeper into the backyard, not as wide, but deeper. Uh, it was actually higher, so the house came at twenty-six percent. We reduced it to twenty-three percent. It's a lot more green. It's still in excess of the twenty percent requirement, but the house, again, the house came in excess of that. Uh, and I would say that this is a small lot and I would ask that that also be taken into consideration to have a usable enough patio for. My two kids, myself, my two creatures. The the small size of the lot sort of impacts that. The other ratio, it's kind of a similar si- situation, max lot coverage, the requirement is thirty-five percent. I'm just a whisker over that at thirty-six point three percent. Again, the property came higher than that. It came at thirty-eight percent. So I actually reduced it. It's more green now and um this patio is a great size for me and my kids that we can grow into and have barbecues and whatnot. Safely. So um. Those are, so there. It looks complicated. There are three variances associated with this uh second project and one variance with the first project, but hopefully. This verbal explanation kind of gives some context as to what I'm really doing.
Done. Any questions? For Mister Yarasi? You can you can just continue sharing your your screen. Thanks.
I can ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Mister Yarasi, with regard to. What I guess is the former garage in the rear, is that now operating essentially as a shed? Right, uh.
And and I'm asking, obvious, I I'm asking obviously because you don't have any. Impervious coverage between the. Traditional driveway. And the garage, it ju- it just stops. And I'm curious as to the intentions with regard to.
Yeah.
The detached garage.
Yeah, so my.
Survey.
Right, my intent was for it to be used as both. Quite frankly, uh because my current car will not, unless I shut the mirrors, it will not even fit into that garage and it would be a tight squeeze and I don't want to do that for obvious reasons. So, but I wanted to, I wanted to be seen as a garage for any future owner. I intend to live in the house for a long time, but just, you know, thinking ahead. And frankly, um. You know, I love motorbikes and scooters and I I want to use it for that. That's a small vehicle. And with that kind of vehicle, um. Yeah, I mean, I have my lawnmower in there. Right now I have a lot of windows in there because I'm doing a big renovation, but. Going forward, once that reno is done with the kitchen, I'm gonna have a limited amount of stuff in there and then, of course, a small vehicle. So I I don't know if I'm answering your question, but it's a bit of both is is what I'm saying.
Uh-huh.
So how do you plan on accessing it by eliminating the driveway between it? You just drive over the grass then?
Well, so my intent is um. You know, I would put park the motorbike. Right behind the double gate, open up the double gate, park it there, leave it there most of the season, and then in the winter, just wheel it in, so it wouldn't. Get. A huge amount of regular use, you know what I mean? Like, the grass will be fine if I just I've done that before, you know, you just wheel it in and the grass will be fine, but I'm keeping it grassed. There's no plants in the way.
Right.
Have you thought about? In that area. Uh pervious pavers? Or something along those lines?
I actually, I should have mentioned that. These are permeable pavers, so it's some new sort of linear.
When you when you wait, wait, hold on a second.
Oh, sorry.
When you say these are, what are you talking about?
Um, so here, let me just do a quick screen share again.
Sure.
And I'll make this quick. And this is all in the packet. Everything I'm showing you is in the packet. Um. So these pavers. Uh, they're not joined with mortar. They're joined with silt and it's a, this is uh some brochure from the company that makes it. It's a permeable. Paver technology. It's you you can see the company labels it as permeable pavers and they have a whole system here where it helps with runoff in general. And it's pitched in a certain way to to try to get the water into the majority of the green space. So um. Look, in a heavy rainstorm, it's not soaking up the water, right? But it it mitigates, I would say. Uh, and the main thing that's really helped is having that soil, the grass there to. Basically help with the runoff to soak in the water. And before it was wicking right into the garage and the garage. Leans just a little bit. I'm not gonna bother with that right now, but I think that's the result of years of runoff and, you know, what happens during the cold season with that, so. Um, so it it's a really nice patio and we we didn't, I didn't skimp on the materials for it. But, you know, I'll I'll follow whatever you. But you know, I'll, I'll follow whatever you recommend. I know I built this without a permit that was inadvertent. I've, I've been diligently seeking permits for everything else. So I hope that demonstrates some good faith and. You know, if, if, if. I'll, I'll do whatever you, whatever the board tells me to do.
So Craig, can I just get a clarification that? We are to consider. That. You know, portion of the patio behind the double gate. As patio, right? We're not. There's no debate as whether or not it's patio or driveway, right?
Well, I think, I think that's what Eileen is categorized it as patio, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And if it was driveway, would it be any different? Other than, other than you get rid of the, the side yard setback, correct?
Correct. The problem with that was that it was built with the same materials. There's no distinction between the two. Like I thought, hey, if you even had. You know, something that distinguished driveway from patio. That would prevent a future occupant of the house from utilizing it as patio.
I mean, if you, if you had a chance to look at it, you'd say it's patio. So.
Right.
Right, right. There's no question about that. Anything else, Steve?
No, well, thank you. Sorry.
Anyone else on the board have any questions? Then I will open up to the audience to see if the audience has any questions. Regarding this. Application. I see none. Anybody have any comments? For this application? I see none there, so. I will close the public portion of the meeting. So board members, what? What comments do you have? Thoughts?
I guess I'll go. So I, I, you know, generally don't like. When applicants have, have built. Something in advance of receiving the permits to do it and then come to us with a, you know, with what's essentially a patio that's already built and. Seeking permission. But that being said, in this case. I, I, I think I can support what the applicant is asking for in, in terms of three of the four. There, you know, variances that they're seeking. They have. You know, pointed out and it's true that they've made the situation better. Than what the condition was previously, which I certainly appreciate and the debate over whether, you know, the. The space where you park the motorcycle is driveway or. Patio, I think we all view it as patio, however, that was where the driveway was and. So, you know, even though. You know, as patio, it's closer to the neighboring property than we'd like it to be. It, it was already driveway in the same location. And I, I honestly don't see how that really impacts the adjacent property, especially given that there's a fence there now and it's screened. So. You know, I, I, I think that there. There are some limitations with the property. There is some hardship and I think that what the applicant has done is, is. You know, fairly modest and has made the site better. So I, I could support that.
Thank you. Anyone else have some thoughts? So I'll go real quick then. So as, as the front yard setback, you know, I really have no issue with that. It's not. Making the situation worse, so the condition worse, so. So as for this, this patio, which seemed to have triggered the, the rest of it. You know, as Amy mentioned, coming for, asking for forgiveness is, is never as good as asking for permission, but you know, here we are. So. You know, we don't, since we're not seeing a before product is sort of interesting because that driveway plus the existing patio. That what's being asked for could have poss, could possibly be an improvement. Of the condition. But it doesn't really matter because it's not there. And then I have to think to myself, well, if this was the application and it wasn't done, would, would, would it be denied? Based on the variances sought and, and by eliminating some of the. Impervious coverage, whether these, the pervious. Pavers wherever they are, but by eliminating some of the actual mecanum and then saying, okay, well substituting with a little bit more patio that can be doubled as a. As a parking area. I'm not sure it'd be denied. So. You know, as much as I don't like. A forgiveness application, I, I don't see this one as being egregious. So. I too would be in support of it. Anyone else? Silence is definitely.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Craig. You know, in actuality, oh, I wanted to ask the applicant, so do you plan on doing any renovations of that garage?
Not in the near future. I'm doing so much with the house. To recharge.
But yeah, I think that, that, that portion of, of. A patio that is, you know, at times represented this driveway is an improvement over a. A blacktop driveway that would go all the way down. Into it, so. I, I can, I can support the application.
Do I have a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
I'll second.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Shondre Harjani?
Yes.
Jessica Gland?
Yes.
Craig Plutner?
Yes. So good luck with the rest of the project.
Great, thank you. And I'd like to thank the board and especially Eileen for helping me. You know, through this process. So thank you all. Good night. Next up, we have calendar thirty-eight ninety-three, twenty-two, forty-five Deer Path, Edward and Pamela Rubin.
Good evening, folks. How are you?
Hello, how are you?
Good. So is Danny the only one speaking on behalf of you tonight as well?
Yes.
With the starch, sure. Hi.
Okay, great. So I'm sure everyone in and we'll go from there.
Everyone just raise their right hands, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give it tonight's hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth?
I do.
Yes.
Your names to the record, please.
Okay, I'll go first. Daniel Dubinette.
Pamela Rubin.
And Edward Rubin.
Thank you.
Thanks. Who would like to start?
Yeah, I'd like to jump into it if I may.
Okay, you know. Qualifications are.
Thank you so much. Hi, I'm a licensed architect since two thousand. So it's, it's been twenty-two years. My license is a good effect and current. I primarily practice residential architecture in Essex County. And I went to school, NGIT, I received my master's degree of architecture. And I've been practicing in a fear before this board numerous times.
Hey, how the license is? Excellent. Proceed.
Okay. I'd like to share a screen and take you through the project. Let me do that. Okay, so this is, I'd like to mark this as exhibit A1.
Hold on a second.
Thank you.
All right. So what, what is A1?
A1 consists of four slides. It's all bundled together in a PDF file. And they consist of the architectural plans and elevations. Survey and zoning chart and some current photographs and Google Earth images of the site.
Can you prepare this yourself, Dan?
I did.
And you'll provide a copy to myself and to Eileen?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so. This project, it's located in forty-five Deerfield and it's a corner piece of property. It's on the corner of Oswego Lane. And Deerpath. And I'd like to show you the survey as a reference. And kind of go over what, what we're proposing. So it's in the R4 zone and again, it's a corner lot and. It's slightly oversized. So the requirement is twenty thousand and this lot is twenty-two. But of course, as you know, in a front, a corner lot, the bulk of the property. That they have is in the front yards. So I'd like to just quickly outline it because it's a little thing. Oswego Lane is. Here and then we make turn. Side yard. We have basically two fronts. We have the front of Oswego, the front on Deerpath. Front facing garages are not allowed. So we're proposing a new garage and it'll be side facing and the only variance that we're seeking tonight to. Be able to allow to do this project is building coverage. That'll run through the numbers really quickly, but fourteen percent is the. Maximal loud and we are seeking fourteen point eight seven percent. We're, I'll take you through the project, but we're asking for about a hundred ninety-three square feet over what's allowed. Which translates into a deviation. From what's allowed of six point two percent. There are some. Very, very unique situations that make this project exciting for, for me and for the homeowner. And of course, I, I'd like to show the proofs that I don't believe there's any negative impact by allowing it. And one of the unique situations about this house is that they inherited. Something a little unusual, which is, I'll take you through it. This is the footprint. This is the footprint of the existing house. And this, this portion of it is a two-story. Colonial home and the garage, the existing garage is located in the back of the home. And so. Side facing grate and this is the existing driveway, which is pretty big and has a fairly large. Parking and turnaround in the back. So the first thing, you know, that we thought of, which is exciting because the garage being in the back. Of the house and obviously with the limited, when I call it rear yard, the garage really is a clog. To the art, you know, to, to enjoying the, the views and the, and what backyard they could have. Because currently, currently I would say that their backyard and for their enjoyment. Is this. Area here. There's a little deck in the back. And so this is like their area and with the garage, obviously. Internally, the kitchen has no views of the backyard and the flow is not great. So what we would like to do is transform the garage into a family room, which they don't have. And that will open up. Their yard significantly for them. So the backyard will now appear to be this big. And the addition that we're seeking will be a new two-car garage. And a side entrance and mudroom. So let me take you through the plans. And with that, we'll reorganize the driveway and we're going to reorganize the front walkway. And the, the lot is very wide, so a hundred and thirty-five feet wide. So again, the variance that we, we need to do this is, is for the building coverage. So this is the existing. And proposed floor plan. So the existing home. Is here. And so kind of fund, this is the garage that we transformed into the family room. So now we'll have views to this part.
Hey, hey, Dan?
Yes, sir.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna be marking exhibits that have been previously been provided, they have to be marked as separate exhibits unless you intend to erase what you're marking.
Well, I would like, I can't, I cannot make this, but can I submit this in the end or no?
Sure. I just want to keep tracks if you're going to be moving around that to the extent that you mark up in a. Previously submitted exhibit, it has to be marked as a separate exhibit.
Okay, so at the end of this, do we label this A2? Or keep it A1?
Just, just, just. Is this part of A1?
Yes, it's all A1, these.
All right, well, just the point being is that the, keep the markings and we'll submit it all as A1 at the end.
Yeah, or I don't mind erasing it. It's kind of fun to.
No, no, if you wanna, if you're having fun, keep going.
I'm going to miss this when we go in person because I won't be able to communicate. I communicate, I communicate better with a pen. Then.
Go ahead.
With words, but I could happily erase it and.
No, no, I don't want to ruin your time, Dan. Your world, we're just a guest.
All right, thank you. So. Talking back to our garage, we would turn it to the family room. Our kitchen will now have great views into the family home and out to the backyard and then it's very exciting. We're going to add a new garage. Two-car garage. To the front of the home. And then we'll have. A much needed side entry, mudroom, padroom, laundry. And access obviously from the garage and access from the, from the driveway. It's going to be a one-story addition to the home. And it's going to, I think, be very attractive because it's not going to compete with the main house, the two-story structure. And it's going to look like. A wing, an extension. Of course, architecturally, the roof lines and the materials and details will. Be inspired by the existing home. So I think it's going to be a very elegant solution for them. And then I'd like to take you and show you some photographs that I think help with understanding why I think this is a. A very good application. This first image that we're seeing. Is Google Earth. And I tried to depict in yellow. The proposed one-story addition, which is the garage mudroom and the driveway. And you can see from this picture, the old asphalt driveway will become grass. And we are ninety-four feet away from the adjacent home to the left. There's only. One other home on this street before the street turns. We're ninety-four feet away from that home. And we have a significant amount of very, very, very tall evergreen. Screening, so. The, the, we know negative impact to the neighbors, certainly like airspace, views. No, no negative impact to the neighbors. On the left and the neighbor that's on Oswego. And I'll show you some photographs, sits at a much higher elevation. There's a stockade fence and some mature screening and. They can't see us and we can't see them. So I get, and again, no, no impact negatively. From any of the adjacent neighbors. These are some pictures that I took November fourth. And they accurately depict the site as it is today. And this is a view. From Deerpath. And our driveway, our proposed driveway is going to. Cut in between the trees here. So we're gonna. Come in here. And none of the mature evergreens will need to come down. We'll probably just have to trim up some of the. Low lying. Branches on, on the evergreens. The giant arborvitae is. Adjacent to the home are the neighbors. So there's like two rows of, of evergreens. So the far row is the adjacent homes property line. And the one, the other row is on our property line that we would testify that we would maintain and take care of. Of archery is for sure. So you can see how tall they are and how thick and lush they are that you just really can't see through them. Again, it's just another perspective of the evergreens. And you could see a little bit of the architecture of the existing house, which is. Very nicely done and there'll be no change to the existing home. So I think. This application maintains the character of the existing house. And gives it a little more character by adding the side facing garages. Another view of the house. Okay, this is a nice view. This, this, this photograph shows the adjacent neighbor on. Oswego. And so you can see the significant elevation change, the privacy fence. The trees. So again, they can't see us, we can't see them. The family room, the existing garage that will be the family room will not have any. Uh the family room, the existing garage that'll be the family room, will not have any windows here. But we'll have windows on this side and we currently have windows on the other side, so um there'll be no light pollution, I guess, from from our windows for the neighbor. And again, this is the, this last slide, which shows you the corner of Oswego in Deer Path. And so you could see from this photograph that I feel like the property can handle the addition and certainly the main house can support uh this garage addition that'll be about twenty-four feet wide on the left side of the property. So again, that's the application. I don't think there's any uh negative impact to the tentative result. Then certainly no negative impact to the adjacent neighbors uh significant distance away, which was fainting. And uh no trees will need to come down as a result of this application. So the positive really comes down to kind of updating modernity from the home and finding the solution that really the key that unlocks the puzzle of this house, which is that existing garage, which really was I call it like a clog. It was just clogging up uh the potential of this small backyard, but they would get more function out of it. So that's the application and uh like to entertain some questions if you have.
Okay, um stop sharing your screen real quick.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead. Any questions?
Hey, hey, Daniel, you talked about trees on the neighbor's property. Those trees are not gonna be impacted at all by any construction on your client's property, correct?
Correct.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? All right, so here's the big one. Um to make it conform, how much of a detriment is that to your plan?
Um, well, glad you asked that, because I did want to mention that um, well, to make it conform would be to 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 reduce it by a hundred ninety-three square feet would be uh a detriment, because we wouldn't be able to get, and certainly we were coming from a twenty-two by twenty-two garage, which works. Doesn't work well, and it doesn't allow for, we like to keep the garbage inside and the bicycles inside, so the slightly um larger than what we had existing would be great for us. And we did look at if we reduced it. Um, obviously, I could bring the numbers down. I couldn't get it to conform it, but I could bring the numbers down, but then I, to what? I don't wanna say, to what avail, I guess, to what uh major impact it would have visually. Um, I could bring the numbers down slightly, but we kind of uh you know, given the opportunity to design a new garage and certainly to get a uh laundry room to work. Not, none of these spaces are particularly large in nature, the powder room, um the mudroom, the laundry room. So yes, I did look at, and we should try to squeeze and probably uh we could find a few square feet here and there, but not, not one ninety-three would be very tough. Yes.
Any uh board members, any questions? And uh I will open up to the uh attendees if they have any questions for this application. Anyone have any comments in the audience? I see none, so I will then close the public portion. So board members, what are your thoughts?
I could say.
Yeah, really.
Why?
We're not being chatty tonight.
Yeah.
Dan left them speechless.
Yeah, just inspiring.
Yes.
I'll, I'll start, I'll start. Um, well, when, when I first got to the house, I was having a little trouble understanding what was what was actually um, you know, gonna be done here. And then once I turned my plans in the right direction and kind of figured it out. Um, I, I think that this is a tastefully done plan. Um, I don't think that they're asking um for too much. I, I really do think that the property can handle the um additional building coverage. Um, you know, I, I mean, I don't have that much more to say that, you know, besides that I could support the application.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jessica. Um, you know, you know, it was marked out on the driveway, so thank you for that, uh Dan. Um, thoughtful.
Thank you.
It's thoughtful, it's tasteful, it's practical. You know, i- i- it's modern. Yeah, I, I, I like it. I think it's a nice plan. It's uh I don't see any issues with it. I can support it.
Yeah, I would agree with all the above. I think it's a thoughtful, thoughtful plan. I like that it stays at one floor, one story. Is it built on slab, the whole thing?
That porch will be slab, no basement, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Crawl space?
I'll probably have a crawl space underneath the mudroom, so I apologize. Yeah, crawl space underneath the mudroom. Uh, be honest with you, I hadn't thought that far um because the garage, that'll be the family room, is a slab, so it'll probably have to be slab everywhere.
Right, yeah, you know where to access it from. Um, so anyway, I, so I think it's thoughtful, I think it's well laid out. I, I think because of the vegetation on that side of the home that this won't be really uh seen by the neighbor and the neighbor's pretty far away on that side. So I think for a corner lot, um, you know, this is about as easy as you're gonna get away with it. So um I would support the application. Anyone else?
I agree with everything that's been said. I can support the application.
In that case, do I have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Oh, second is.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Sean Drew Hargani?
Yes.
Jessica Wyatt?
Yes.
Craig Puttner?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
So can we vote to keep uh Zoom?
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you like, you like that too, isn't you?
Well, it does make presenting uh a bit easier and
Yeah.
clear. And everybody can see the exhibits and the people at home can see the exhibits. You know, when we sit in the back of the room, no one knows what's going on, so.
I'm trying to uh talk Alex into like, you know, some kind of computerized TVs all along the sidewalls of the room. See how that goes.
Thank you.
Say, but
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good evening.
Okay, next up, uh we have and this is uh calendar thirty-eight ninety-six twenty-two forty North Road, Annette uh Roma's. Looks like um Hey, Rich, how are you, Nick?
Good, how are you?
She's gonna bring it over.
Yeah.
Um, Ms. Roma's um is using uh under Cassandra, I think, Roma's today.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, Cassandra.
Okay.
You have her there, Eileen?
I think she's coming over.
She's coming.
If you could, please turn on your camera and your uh your microphone.
Sorry, I'm having technical difficulties. Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you, new house. Lots of new stuff going on. Okay, um.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. If you both raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give us tonight's proceeding be the truth, told truth, and by the truth?
I do.
Yes, I do. Just your names for the record, please.
Annette Roma's.
And Richard Keller, K E L L E R.
Like to start this evening.
Annette will do a brief intro and then I'll take over from there.
Super.
Okay. Hi, my name is Annette Roma's. Um I just briefly, I grew up here in town and um actually, I was born here in Oberleuk and lived here my whole life. I went to the Milburn School System um all the way up through high school. And then I moved into New York City. And after several years there, I decided to move back to Short Hills. And about three years ago, I was visiting my mom who still lives here. I grew up on Tennis and Drive um that faces the golf course. And um I found this property at forty north. It was park-like. It reminded me of where I grew up. It's close to home and I just fell in love with it. Um, so bought the property, knew that it was a lot of work that I needed to uh to, to take care of. And um I think what drew me to it was there was a lot of history. And there was, again, this like park-like feel to it. Um, I hired John James. So John James, architect, did the renovation. Uh, we brought the house up to date. Um, but quickly I realized that the house had a lot of trespassing. It was kind of unkempt for many years and there were, there were no fences. So um I immediately filed and got some back fencing to be done. And what I didn't realize is that it's such an odd lot that I would need variances to do any, anything else, you know, any front gate and um any front fencing. So um what I also realized is that there's a pond. And while um the property is amazing, this pond draws a lot of attention and I get a lot of dog walkers. I get just numerous amounts of trespassers. It's a long, snaky driveway and people think it's an extension of North Road, so I get an enormous amount of traffic. Um, it's odd, but I get between landscapers, service vehicles, um dog walkers, I get people with baby strollers, you name it, everyone comes up the road, whether to look at the pond or just because they think it's part of the road. And um that's a lot of liability on my watch. And I also feel that um my security is at risk. And um I just, you know, I feel for peace of mind that it would be really beneficial if I could get, um, I don't want Fort Knox, but I am looking for um safety, security and um you know, a sense of peace of mind if I can have gates at the front of the driveway. And also um a split rail fence, actually, just to follow suit with the rest of the property, just along up to meet that. Um, as well as I think it would protect me and anyone else from the pond. And um, oh yes, the other thing that I actually um thought would be great is the pool, the property has a tennis court. And like most of my neighbors, um they all have pools. And um I just saw that it would be a great addition to the property to have a pool as well. And the location that I've decided on is mostly because I don't want to disturb any of the mature trees. And right in that clearing is where there are no trees, so. Um, that's it. Um, I realized that I needed to file for variance and so I hired uh Rich Keller to speak on my behalf and so I'll hand it over to Rich.
Good, Rich.
Good evening. Um, I would, I guess, uh, do I need to uh submit my proofs?
Why don't we, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, licensed as both since nineteen eighty-nine and nineteen ninety. Um, I purposely don't do the maths to show how old I am, but I've been a engineer and planner for a long time. I've appeared before this board, approximately a hundred and ten boards throughout the state of New Jersey, as both engineer and planner. I have uh, I have also done municipal consulting as an engineer to the um, the township of Long Hill as well as South Orange Village. And I've been a consulting planner to the uh Caldwell, uh Borough Caldwell Board of Adjustment. Um, my licenses are in good effect and it's always uh nice to be back for you guys. Zoom or not?
Thank you. Please continue.
Certainly. Uh, I'll start out with, um, I will have a couple exhibits, but I'm gonna start out with the Roma's variance uh residence variance application, which is part of your uh application package. Um, and I will share a screen. So the property um itself, we look at the area map on the sheet, is uh, it's located on the north side. I'm sorry, the east side of North Road, about three hundred and fifty-five, uh fifty-seven feet uh north of Hobart Avenue. It is an irregular Z-shaped lot with about a hundred feet of frontage on North Road and it opens up into a total of two point seven five acres of property. Uh interestingly enough, this property was originally part of the estate of Moses Fittute um back in the late eighteen hundreds. The property actually, the North Road was called East Road. Um, the property came down, it came to the back uh up to the, the east where I'm drawing now. Encompassed the uh easterly side of the property and then down between one oh five uh South Terrace and three oh three Hobart, where there's a um, um large stone house. Um, and then uh came down and it all the way to North Road. So this entire parcel was actually broken up in nineteen thirty-six um into three parcels, whereas the corner lot uh was one lot, lots thirty-three and thirty-four contain the original estate home. Back on what is the subject property contained a barn and a stone barn and a garage and a number of other outstructures. Um, and then the uh, the third parcel was what's known now as forty-four uh North Road. It's the Liebersfeld residence. Uh, and I'll show some photos of all this in a few minutes. But the property is certainly irregularly shaped, um which is a couple of things. One is, it's technically a flag lot, but because of the the Z shape, it means that the house really is not seen at all from North Road. Um, and as indicated, the um, the property um is about two point seven five acres um in the R three zone, where twenty-nine thousand square feet is required. So it's about a little over four times the required lot size. Um, if we look at the, the subject property itself, um you come up a long drive that comes back about a hundred and thirty-five feet. Um, it is, it does have a very rural setting for the people who've been out to the site and I'll show some photos. Um, the driveway is about twelve feet wide. When Annette uh bought the property, it was a stone drive. Um, she wanted to keep that um, that sort of country feel, but no one would plow the road for her. So after two winters, she decided to pave it, but kept it twelve feet, which I was very happy. Um, many of my clients would have wanted that eighteen feet so we could get parking. Um, she really wanted to preserve that, that uh uh that park-like setting of the property, which as she alluded to, has created some problems. You make that left turn, um, there's a tall stand of uh bamboo on our property and the neighboring property. Uh, trees on both sides, the rear of the property is at front on Hobart. And you, as you get to the pond, you make a right turn and you get the first view of the house, which again was cobbled together by adding the old stone bar, uh old stone barn. There was a stone garage that was taken down and the garage was then rebuilt uh closer to the house with a port cochere connecting it. Um, and it's right behind that uh that we're looking to put the proposed pool. As you can see from the blue line, uh our front yard um is denoted by the, the blue line that's on the lower right-hand side of the, of the just to the bottom of the, of the, of the garage. Um, so the closest part of the, of the house it's connected to the house, to the street, forms our front yard. So everything, the pond and this Z shape is all front yard. The rear yard is defined as the furthest point back, parallel concentric to the street. So you can see we have a rear yard about thirty-five thousand square feet, which is relatively small for a property that's uh two point seven five acres. Um, and everything else in the middle is side yard. And the way that the property um was developed with the front door facing to the south, the functional rear yard is behind the home, um but technically, most of that is actually in a side yard. I would point out that the uh, the existing house is two hundred and ninety-five feet from North Terrace, North Road, excuse me. And it's only twenty-five point four four feet from the back line. So clearly, uh, it's an irregular-shaped lot with, in a regular placement of the house being so far back on the property, which creates um uh unique conditions as to what is front, rear and side yard. If I were to go over to my first uh exhibit, that is that is, I've labeled it photo exhibit, ten annotated site and neighborhood photos of the Roma residence. Forty North Road and Short Hills. It's dated today, November seventh, and all the photos were taken by myself earlier today. So they certainly, and they've not been altered. They certainly uh, reflect the site as it exists today.
And Rich, how many photos are we talking about?
Uh, ten annotated site photos.
Okay, we're going to mark that as A one.
Thank you.
So the, just like I, I mentioned to Mr. Dubinette, um, please provide that to both myself and to Eileen.
Or you have a package ready to go in the email.
Um, so Rich, if you could, because the um, the variance plot plan that I have in the main file does not have on, I think it's different than what you just showed. It doesn't have the tax maps in the corner or any of the zoning stuff. Um, I, I could just get that flat from you also.
I think the one that the board has does now, but I will mark, we, we should probably mark that A two just in case. We, we substituted that out, that the plan you have probably should have been discarded because I brought twenty thirteen of the other one in.
So wait, let's go before we, let's go back then. So, right.
So mine doesn't have the um, zoning calculations or the tax map. It just has um, the subject parcel, that's all. I don't know what the board has. Maybe the copies came in, I don't know.
My, my, mine has a zoning table for sure.
Okay, so it's just possible that we didn't get one in the main file. So, okay, as long as I, I'll get one coming. I'm good.
So Craig has the correct one. I think the board all has the correct one.
Right, just they didn't put one in my file. Okay, no problem.
Okay.
So then we're going to continue with, with the ten slide photo exhibit as A one.
Yes.
So the first photograph is I'm standing at the edge of pavement on North Road looking east and you can, especially today with the leaves on the road. Um, it has sort of a, a very uh, rural feel to it. Um, Annette was, Ms. Roma's was very clear. She did not want to put curving on. She wanted to keep that park-like feel. Just replace the stone with uh, the gravel with uh, with pavement at the same twelve foot width. And so uh, as you're entering between the two large trees which are remaining, uh, this is the entrance into the site off of North Road. Just beyond the mailbox is where we are proposing uh, to put two piers. Um, they would be thirty-six inch by thirty-six inch by forty-eight inches tall. Um, and they would be met with post and rail fencing. It would come up to the sides and there would be a timber gate between them. Uh, we're set back thirty-five feet from the property line, which is about forty-five feet from the edge of pavement where I'm standing right now. So that uh, anyone coming to the site, contractors or visitors, um, actually two full vehicles could get off the road. Um, um, certainly one vehicle could get off the road while um, waiting for uh, Ms. Roma's to allow entry or to punch in the code so they can get into the property. So it was carefully pushed back both to help screen it into the landscape, also to make sure there would never be any cars that back up onto North Road. The next photo, I've come about a hundred uh, and twenty-five feet up the driveway and look back. And you can again see uh, why it has this sort of park-like setting. It looks a little more like um, Short Hills Park um, than it does um, a standard driveway. And I think because the property was vacant so long, as Ms. Roma said, uh, and underutilized, a lot of people got used to walking their dogs up this area. We then turn around uh, and make that first left turn. You'll see that there's the stand of bamboo. Um, there's landscaping uh, along the side and rear of the property behind us. This is the driveway as it comes up to the pond and the pond is where we make that right turn. Um, slide number four, I've actually made the turn of looking back towards the adjacent residence at forty-four North, the Leivers Feld residence, looking across that pond. And it's quite idyllic and there are benches there and there's a a fake blue heron, although there have been real blue herons there. Um, so it's quite idyllic and it does seem to attract dog walkers who like to sit along the uh, on, on the uh, along the banks. Much of this being caught on uh, on Ms. Roma's is um, um, doorbell, uh, door camera. Um, uh, when she's been traveling and, or even when she's home. Um, if we then look at photograph number five, this is looking back now towards the main house and you can see on the right side is the um, the stone barn that was created. It was turned into a dwelling with additions that were put on uh, later in the twentieth century. And this is the um, the new garage that was moved essentially closer to the house, connected with a, a second floor with a port cochere that goes into what is the functional rear yard of the house. If we then turn slightly, looking back towards what I'm calling the functional rear yard, looking past the pond, past the garage, which is part of the main house, um, into the rear yard, uh, actually from this view, you would not see the proposed pool, the pool being behind the house. Um, what is functionally the rear of the house, but located in the side yard. And then finally, uh, another two photographs, this is from um, the pool area, um, right behind the garage. I'm looking back towards the Leivers Feld residence of forty-four North. You'll see what we mostly see is the garage wing. Um, with some, with some dormers above it, that's in the right side. Um, the gaps in the landscaping, once the, all the fencing is brought up to be pool code compliant, these gaps would be filled in with proposed landscaping. Ms. Roma's has undergone a lot of thinning out of old dead trees and a lot of replanting. Uh, and certainly will continue to do so to ensure the privacy in that park-like setting. The um, looking the other way, this is looking to the east. The home in the background is a home that we worked on with John James. It's under construction. That's at forty Twin, uh, Twin Oak Road. Uh, the backyard of that property is twenty-five feet below the plateau uh, of Ms. Roma's property and the street is forty-seven feet below. So the natural topography limits uh, any kind of views of the uh, of the accessory structures that are going technically in the side yard. And then finally, we have some pictures of the fencing. This is the um, the type of split rail fencing with wire mesh that Ms. Roma's is proposing. It's about uh, four point two five, about four point two five feet um, to the top rail, to the uh, top metal um, posts which have been added with uh, mesh to keep it pool code compliant and somewhat irresistible. Uh, that's on top and that brings the whole total up to six feet. Uh, this is the kind of fencing you expect to see when you go up to uh, Jockey Hollow or some of the uh, uh, the turn of the, the revolutionary era sites. And this is certainly a lot of the type of fencing that was um, uh, employed back in the heart sore days, um, when these properties were all developed out of the Fittute residence. In fact, um, the properties in the distance were all heart sore. This was a Fittute property we're on. And then finally, photograph number ten is looking at that um, property line between the house at forty Twin Oak, uh, where they took out the tennis court and put in the soccer uh, uh, field. You can see the difference between um, that split, that post and rail fence with the uh, topper on top that brings it up to six feet. It really disappears completely into the landscape, except for some bushes, some uh, vines grow up on it. And it's quite different than the uh, six to eight foot uh, chain link fence that's be on the property behind us, which you see throughout. And so it was a good juxtaposition to show the fencing that we're proposing is both sort of historically relevant and correct. And it also uh, kind of disappears into the landscape. So that is the um, that is the photo exhibit. And I'll quickly go through um, one more, which kind of explains the relationship between this property and the neighboring property. So this would be A two. It's the neighborhood exhibit uh, for the Roma's residence and the drawing is dated November seventh. And the background photograph was captured on June tw- uh, twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-two. And so uh, this is intended to show a couple of things, the relationship between um, our property and the surrounding yards. So um, if you look at thirty North Road, which is immediately to our right, where we're proposing, our driveway comes in amongst the trees. We're proposing the fencing at thirty-five feet back. You can see um, we're very close to the side yard of thirty North. So our front yard fence that runs along the entirety um, from the side, from the front yard back, uh, for us is a front yard. But the resident at thirty North would be fully within the rights to put up a six-foot fence because it's their side yard. Similarly, when you turn the corner, um, we zigzag along the rear of three oh seven Hobart, lot thirty-three. Um, the side property lines uh, which are in our front yard and require variance relief for that split layer fence, that's in the side and rear of lot thirty-three. So that's again, that owner could put up a six-foot fence without a variance. We need a variance because it's technically in our front yard. And the same on the other side, um, the uh, Leivers Feld residence at forty-four North. Here's the dividing line between the front and side yard. Um, you can see that most of the fencing we're proposing to run up and along um, the uh, the property line encamp, uh, encompassing the, the pond, uh, replacing any fence that's either come down or deficient or doesn't meet pool code requirements. Um, all that fencing up to the, our side uh, rear yard divider, that all needs variance relief from us. However, the Leivers Felds could put up a six-foot fence there without the need for variance relief. So what we're asking for is really what will be permitted on, on any of the lots around us, because we're really contiguous to everyone else's uh, mostly rear, but some side yards. Uh, the only, the only area we're kind of deviating is when we're looking for the front yard fencing nestled within the trees. Again, that type of fence that breaks down into the landscaping and that's really for security purposes. Um, the and again to the rear, you can see that um, while the tennis court is technically behind the house, it straddles the line um, between the uh, between the rear and side yard. All the rest of the fencing will be brought up to be pool code compliant. We don't need variance relief for that. But it was important for Annette to also recognize that the pool code compliant fence really needs to come and encompass the pond uh, and tie into the house. So we're protecting uh, people, children, animals from getting not only into the pool, but the pond, which is an attractive nuisance. So that connecting fence uh, also, um, I think Annette realized coming home at times in the snow, um, there is the possibility as you come around this corner of a vehicle sliding because it does drop uh, grade-wise into the pond. So it's important to also create a fence there just as a barrier, both a visual barrier and somewhat um, uh, physical barrier. So if people make this curve, they don't end up into the pond. So that's the um, that's the neighborhood as it exists today. You can see pools are certainly not unusual and our pool is actually smaller. The pool at the back of three oh three unfortunately sits, you know, the decking is exactly twelve feet off the line of a twenty, twenty-five, a thirty-five feet up the front of Annette's house, right? Unfortunately, close to her master bedroom, but um, you know, it's one of these irregular lots where it's the interstitial stuff that was left over post-depression after these lots were subdivided. So in the end, uh, going back to our application package with the zoning table, we need variance relief for four sections of the, of the ordinance. One is for maximum accessory coverage and that's because our rear yard is relatively small, given the size of the lot. So for um, only eleven thousand square feet of, of coverage on a two point seven five acre lot, so it's eleven thousand three hundred and sixty-eight square feet of accessory coverage on a very large lot, um, we exceed the twenty percent permitted up at thirty-two point four three. Accessory use location, uh, we do have existing patios, tennis courts located in a side yard. They're existing non-conforming conditions. We are looking to add the pool and patios also technically in a side yard. Um, and as Annette indicated, that's really the best location, not only functionally, but it's the area where there's no trees. Accessories for the mechanical uh, you, location, we are proposing that the pool equipment is not in the front yard, it's technically in the side yard. Um, it is still two hundred and ninety-five feet away from North Terrace and it is still a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and forty feet away from the Leivers Feld uh, residence to, to the uh, to the west. But we do need a variance because we're tucking the uh, pool equipment into what is technically a side yard. And then finally, our last variance that we need relief from is the fence location. They are not permitted in a front yard and we are, while we do have some existing front yard fences, we're looking at replacing them where they're not pool code compliant. And then finally, we're looking at adding the front security gates and piers in the front. So we need four variances. We think that all of these variances um, can certainly be approved under C one. Uh, with a location and orientation of the lawful existing dwelling, uh, combined with the irregular shape of the lot. Feels a relatively small rear yard and a condition where the only functional location for accessory structures or uses uh, and the associated equipment is in a side yard and the pool code compliant fencing, both for the pool and the pond just have to be in the front yard. Um, so the irregular shape and location of the lawful existing dwelling creates a hardship uh, for us developing this property without the need for variance relief. But I think one thing I've learned, um, especially as uh, um, Ms. Roma's mom's place was broken into over the weekend. Um, there's a, there's a sense of urgency um, in the need for some security. The property has had a history of people coming onto the property. Um, there's no trespassing signs that have proven ineffective. And so there's really a C two component of this where the purposes of the Land Use Act are advanced. Um, and uh, and the out, the benefits certainly outweigh the detriments. Um, the purpose that are advanced are obviously safety and general welfare. And that the front yard fence and the gates uh, provide security from unwanted pedestrians uh, and cars. And I will point out, the problem you get with cars or the landscapers that come up in here is that because the driveway is so narrow, they can't turn around and so they get all the way up right to the house and, and are visible from the ring doorbell. Um, and then they have to turn around here and come back. But often they don't just leave. They get out, they walk through the port cochere, they look at the property, they walk in the pond. So certainly, um, we think that the security gates would hopefully put an end to that. Uh, and there's certainly uh, the promotion of desirable visual environment and the preservation of, of a historic property. I think while we're not a designated historic property and we're not in the historic zone, um, Ms. Roma's has been very careful to um, to treat all of the work um, uh, in a historic manner, including her selection of the fence materials, the fact that the piers would be built out of the same stone as the main house. Um, and it will maintain that park-like setting that exists, has existed since the, the eighteen hundreds. So certainly we aver- advanced the purposes of the Land Use Act. I think that's um, I think that in terms of the negative criteria, which is in two prongs, that there's no detriment to the public. Um, and there's no uh, substantial detriment for the intent and purpose of the master plan. Um, given the topography and the landscaping, this can't be seen by any of the neighbors a little bit from the Leivers Feld, but that'll be, that's limited and then it'll be blocked with additional landscaping. And it's really in a rear, in, in what feels like everyone else's rear anyways. Um, and the structures are contiguous to other reards of the surrounding properties. Uh, we're way under unlocked coverage. So while we have a, a variance for accessory coverage, we're way under unlocked coverage at nineteen point two, we're thirty-five per- permitted. So we're just over, over half, over half of what's permitted, uh, even with a tennis court and a pool. And the pool is not a large pool for this property either. Um, they've selected the historically correct post and rail fencing, which blends into the landscaping. It appears to be much smaller for the neighbors and from the street. Um, the, much of the proposed fencing is continuous to neighboring side rear yards where six-foot high fencing is already permitted. Um, and as we indicated, the proposed gates are set back forty-five feet from the edge of pavement so that it will not hamper any kind of traffic. Um, and unless you actually stop or start to walk up the, the roads, I don't think you'll even see them. And certainly, there's nothing contrary to the intent purpose of the master plan. We're preserving a historic, we're continuing to preserve an historic property. And we're certainly um, promoting this uh, this property um, uh, as one that advances the character of Milburn as a suburb of the highest quality. Uh, we think it's a very carefully thought out application. It's hopefully the final touch on a three-year restoration, loving restoration of a great old historic property that has, had really fallen on bad times. And we certainly hope you approve it and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions, some things I don't understand related to the accessory use coverage. So the first one I want to ask you is, um, when I visited the property, I, I believe I saw two structures on the property that are not on your site plan. Uh, one of them's in your photo that you showed. There were two, I don't know, they look like sheds or not, they're larger than sheds. There's two other struck. Can you, can you explain what those are? And are they in the side yard, the rear yard?
Um, there is, um, there is one we did know. There are two things we noticed is one of the, one of the um, shed structures um, was still on the property. We thought it was to be removed, so we took it off. And the other thing is um, on my survey, I call it as a two-story, two-family house. It's a one-family, not a two-family. Um, I think uh, I don't know, I, I think uh, Annette can indicate what that's been repurposed as. That structure is an accessory structure that is partly in the rear yard and partly in the side yard of the property.
Which one, sorry, Rich, you, there, so there's one that's a stone structure that's sort of what I would call towards the front of the house, if you're from the front door. And then there was one in the I, I don't know what the right, given that the side and the rear is all mixed up, but what would I call the back of the house? There was another one that was like wooden structure.
Okay, so this, so are you talking about, this is part of the house? So that's the garage that is linked to the main house.
I'm not sure what this is.
Okay, this is, um, you can see the screen, correct?
No.
No, you're not sharing.
Sorry, I, I, I hit the bottom button, share. Okay. So this is, this is the main house on the right. Is this the part of the stone structure you're referring to?
No, adjacent to, if, if you show your aerial photo, maybe in your packet.
The on my site-
Be up in the top corner. Hang on. There's this, yeah, isn't that a separate structure?
Yeah, that's, that's actually a, a, a potting shed, a gardener shed that um, again, I did notice that earlier. Um, originally we thought that was going to come down. It's actually been repaired. We, it, it was in bad enough shape. We thought it would come down. Uh, it is counted in my coverage. I did check that earlier. Um, and then there's also another structure to the back of the property.
But, but just, just so I can, when I'm not understanding, these blue lines represent what you're calling s- side yard, right?
The, this line here, so when we look at thi- this, this um gardener shed here.
Yes.
That is located in the side yard because this, the front yard is predicated on the, on the closest part of the house to the street. And the rear yard is predicated on the furthest part back from the street. So this defines my, my difference from my side and rear and my side and front. So this potting shed here, uh, this gardener shed is in a side yard.
Okay, and then there's something that's not, maybe it's below these trees. There's another structure there, but also side yard.
That is also, that's a combination of side and rear yard and that is on this photo right there. So that-
Building, yeah.
That's right. And I think Annette can say what actually happens in that. That was, that goes back to the eighteen hundreds, that structure. Um, and that can indicate what happens there. But for some reason, it's in my area calculations, but it was not shown on our survey, but that um, and then what is that, what is that?
Sorry, it's part of your rear yard calculation of that structure.
That is, that is part of the accessory structures that straddles both the rear yard and the side yard. And, and our, by the way, our ordinance doesn't uh, doesn't matter where the accessory structure is, whether it's in the front or the side or the rear, it all gets counted against your rear yard area, against that thirty-five percent rear yard area.
Okay. Why does the order in, oh, sorry, ordinance, maybe this isn't for you. It says all accessory uses shall occupy an area no greater than twenty percent of the rear yard.
Right. So of the rear yard, which is this, this arcing blue line at the top of the drawing, this is the, this is the rear yard. That's thirty-five percent.
Your, your drawing's not there anymore, Rich.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Keep stopping sharing screen. Okay, so from, and everyone can see that now. So this is the rear yard. This is represents thirty-five percent, thirty-five thousand square feet of the um, hundred and nineteen thousand square foot lot. And our ordinance says of that rear and area, twenty percent of that can be taken up with accessory structures anywhere. So the entire um tennis court, the pool, the patios, the um, the pot, the uh gardener shed, the additional building over here, those all, all get amortized over this rear yard, even though they're not in the rear yard. And that's limited to twenty percent. What's actually in the rear yard is way under twenty percent that are required to count everything.
I see, but every accessory structure gets allocated to that area.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, I think that answers then my second question about accessory use coverage because whatever you're adding, which I guess is just the pool, right? Is the additional, the pool patio.
We're adding some stepping stones, we're adding the pool.
Right.
Eight by ten patio. We're adding um, uh, an area for the mechanicals, a concrete pad for the mechanicals. Um, and that's the total amount of coverage that we're adding to the site.
Got it. Okay, now, now I understand. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Seen any comments from the audience? All right, then I will close the public portion unless there are any other questions from the board members. All right, then close public portion. Comments?
Well, I think this is an incredibly unique um piece of property. I mean, I walked down it and I didn't even know anything like this existed in Short Hills. Um, you know, I can clearly see, you know, when I read the application, what the applicant, um, what the concerns are about safety and privacy. Um, and likewise, with the accessory use coverage, I mean, it's a, you know, it's, it's just the nature of the property that on such a large, large piece of property, um, you would have a, uh, an accessory coverage issue um because of, of where the pool is going. Um, I, I think the strong application and I could, I could support it.
Anything else? I too would support this. It's just kind of an unusual situation um of anomalies that, you know, create this because when you have a lot size that large, clearly it's not impacting any neighbors. So I would be supportive of it. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Togger?
Yes.
Shang Ju Horigani?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Craig Butler?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
Any comments from anyone otherwise in the audience uh for anything that's not on the agenda this evening? I see. Yeah, Eileen, are we, um, are we starting to advise applicants about the need to change up the notice if we're going live?
Um, on, well, I should, I'd say unfortunate, but fortunately, um, I don't have any applications um that haven't been scheduled for one of our December meetings. So going forward, if I do know that there'll be, you know, will be her until January, um, we'll make that change to the application.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, and with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Have a wonderful evening, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Take care.